Welcome to the Forward Miami Show and today is election day. So we're going to be talking about community issues and we're going to be speaking with Marlen Bastien, a good friend, a community activist and running for commission. So here we go. For those of you who don't know Forward Miami, we're a diversity and inclusion organization. We produce the Gay Ocho Festival and the Forward Gala. Marlen, welcome to the show. Thank you so much for giving me this time during this day, election day, to talk a little bit about your candidacy, the race and community issues.
Well, thank you so much, my dear friend. Thank you for creating this space for me in this special momentous day. And I'd like to greet you, greet the members of your team and also greet all the viewers at this time.
That's great. So Marlen, tell me a little bit about why you're running.
Well, as you know, for the past 40 years, I've been working with low income, low to moderate income families as the CEO of Family Action Network Movement for 30 years. Prior to that, I was a medical social worker at Jackson Memorial Hospital, where I worked with patients from different ethnic groups from all over the world. And before that, five years as a paralegal, trained by some of the best immigration lawyers in the nation. I'm running because after 40 years of providing wraparound services to families and also giving them the tools to contribute to their own transformation and empowerment and leading many campaigns related to women's rights, human rights, workers' rights, LGBTQ, children's rights. I decided to put all these skillsets, 40 years that I acquired for 40 years, to benefit, you know, a greater number of people. District two is huge. It has over 100,000 voters. So after 40 years of leading these fights and also providing wraparound services, and then as we're getting out of the pandemic, I realized that we needed a problem solver. And I have the experience for 40 years as a practitioner and also as an advocate. And you need someone, you needed someone with a passion to serve. I've been serving since I was a young girl in my native land. And right after I arrived in the US, I continued to work as a volunteer and as also as, you know, an employee of different institutions and as an advocate, as I mentioned. And most importantly, I have the courage to stand for you for, for issues that are important to the voters.
Marlen, after 40 years of community activism, of grassroots community activism, today, what do you see as the issues that are most prominent, most important for our community?
So I must basically mine, the viewers, that you were probably one of the first ones who interviewed me after I filed in 2019. That was a long time ago. And we did discuss some of the issues because I've been walking in the district since that time. And some of the important issues include the housing crisis. My lord, that we have a serious housing crisis in Miami-Dade County and in Florida in general. I believe that we are one of the most expensive states to live in. And then District two, you know, is considered, I don't like to use the words, the poor, the poorest, the less resourced district in Miami-Dade County. And a lot of people lack access to affordable housing. I've met people, you know, while knocking on doors, were homeless, sleeping in their cars. And there is a new trend of people sleeping in storage rooms, renting storage. Because the housing crisis, yeah, the housing crisis is so harsh. So this is gonna be one of my, this is one of my platform housing. And then I don't know if you realize the high cost of living these days. You go to, you go to the store, you can, with $100, you look at what you bought and you wonder, how can people, those who are less fortunate, how are they surviving? You know, the cost of life is, is, is continuing to increase. However, our salaries, salaries remain stagnant. So there is, there is a discrepancy there. So my organization has been leading a fight to increase wages and for better working conditions. And you know, that's, this is gonna be another platform. And the third one is to invest in businesses, in small and micro and micro businesses. Because businesses are the backbone of our economy, as you know. And then a lot of them are going through a tough time because of the recession, right? So my plan is also to find resources to invest in these businesses. One of the things that I realized that during the pandemic, when we were assisting small businesses to access the federal funds, a lot of them, they lacked the infrastructure to benefit from, for these, for these resources.
What do you mean, what do you mean by infrastructure?
Like some of them, they don't, they, they, the required documentation, you know, that, that were needed for them to access the loans and even the grants. They could not, you know, access them because they didn't have any of these papers. So not only that, I want to invest in business creation, but I also want, you know, to find pots of money to envelop, invest in technical assistance with small businesses and develop private and public partnerships to, to, to support micro businesses and create collaboration so that the big ones can also help the small businesses.
Yeah, I have to say that part about infrastructure rings home because I see a lot of similarity between Little Haiti and Little Havana in that those micro businesses, you know, they don't have the tools or a lot of times the language or the, the translation, you know, the ability to kind of move in the American system yet, you know. Those are not, those building blocks are not, are not there culturally or realistically. And that can become a very big barrier for people just to access well-intended funds meant for them to use, but they're not able to access them.
Yeah. And then I saw that a lot, as I said, during the pandemic. I'd like to fix that. There are other issues that I'm, that I'm not passionate about, as you know, you know, to decrease the violence, to create safe neighborhoods for our families because, because we believe that everybody has a right to live in a, in a, in a safe neighborhood, create pathways for people to raise their families in peace and respect and dignity. Investment, you know, infrastructure, there's, there will, there will be a lot of money coming from the federal government. And then whenever, in the area where I live, whenever it rains, if it rains for a few hours, my, my area is flooded. We'd like, I'd like to find a way to solve that. I'd like to work with former fellow commissioners and the mayor and her staff to bring transit to the 21st century. Because we cannot, we cannot have a transportation system that does not serve its workers. Because we are the capital of the, of the, of the Americas. People need to be able to move from one point to the other to get to work. And then we believe that, I believe that we need to do better in finding a way to get them to move faster and also to humanize transit. In Florida, to these days, if it rains, you, you, you get wet because the shelters are not, you know, appropriate. So I really would like to change that. And then lastly, climate change, you know, climate, build climate residency. And then the difference between me and many of the candidates, because there are six of us, is that all these campaigns, as you know, Damien, I've been working on for the past, you know, 10, 15 years. Whether, whether it's access to affordable housing, I've been leading this fight in Little Haiti, as you know. Whether it's a fight for better working conditions, for, for livable wages, access to, access to healthcare, immigration, DACA, TPS, I've been leading this fight. So unlike other commissioners, I, you know, I will, I have been, you know, involved in these fights. And that commissioner would be voting policies to improve, you know, those conditions. So I think I'm better positioned than, than all of them to, to lead the voters and the constituents of District two.
I also think your area has had a lot of climate gentrification and movement with developers being interested in areas that typically were not attractive, but are attractive now because of climate change.
Yes, because of climate change and climate gentrification. And then as, as, as you know, people will be quick to say, oh, maybe Marlen is against development. We are intelligent people, Damien. I cannot be against development, but what I'm against is what we call predatory development. I think there is a way, there are ways and there are models where the development can be done in Ailea and, and you know, the places in Little Haiti, in Biscayne Garden with the people. We don't have to push the people out because we don't want to build neighborhoods and communities where only the rich can live. No.
Well, the irony, the irony is, the irony is.
Diversity, the diversity.
The irony is places like San Francisco or places around, you know, other places throughout the states where that has already happened, has told the story that it ends up becoming a very boring, dull neighborhood, where everything that was interesting, everything that brought the people to the neighborhood was taken out.
Exactly. Exactly. We don't want that. We want what we call inclusive and participatory development. Where we build and we develop with the people and allow them to stay. Because people travel the world to come to Florida because of our diversity. Our diversity is our strength and we ought to maintain that. And as, as your commissioner, I will do my best to work with the constituents and with my fellow commissioners and the mayor and staff to make sure that we keep Florida open for everyone and that those who build their niche are able to stay in it and thrive.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely wonderful. I had the pleasure of meeting you a long time ago when we were fighting for the anti-discrimination ordinance for the LGBTQ community and, and were able to pass it luckily with George Marsula. Yeah, barely, by, by one vote in 1998, a long time ago. But you've always, you've always been a champion at protecting people from discriminatory practices and allowing kind of a free marketplace and a free society. And I wonder if you had thoughts about the current culture wars we're experiencing.
Oh, my lord. I believe that what's happening in the city of Florida is, 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 is wrong. It is, it is, it's scary. It is scary. And it really behooves all of us to, to really stand up to our governor, you know, who's trying to, to, to divide us, you know, and trying to prevent us, you know, from, from, from being who we are as human beings, deserving of rights, as human beings, knowing and understanding our history, as human beings, recognizing and being able to proudly say who we are as people. And I think that we at FOM, Family Action Network Movement, we sued him twice and we won. We sued President Trump when he was trying to deport immigrants. We won. And, and we're not against, I don't believe in, in, you know, these parties not being able to work together. As a matter of fact, when we fight for Dakara, when we fought for Harifa under President Clinton, I worked closely with Congressman Lincoln Diaz-Balart. I worked closely with, 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 with members of the Republican Party. It was, these were bipartisan fights and then we did very well. So that's not what I'm preaching. What I'm preaching is the right that everyone in this state should have, to live free of fear, to, to be who you are, to love who you want and then to be able to access the services and resources that God put on this earth for all of us, not for some, for all of us. And as your commissioner, I will really do my best. Because when I co-led the, the, this, the, the commission to have the Human Rights Ordinance passed with the late Congressman Kerry Meek and then, and then Alex Pinedellas, we were co-chairs of the outreach committee. Our, our goal was to go out and sell it, right? To make sure people understand that everybody has a right to housing. Everybody has the right to the resources that they have, that exist in their communities. And then we, we did that without fear despite the backlash because we, what we are doing really, what we want, we want to create spaces where every right is respected and every voice is heard and uplifted.
And I want to say that in 1998, your stand was incredibly courageous as well as Alex Pinedellas. At that time, for that stand, you had a big political price to pay.
Backlash.
Yeah, a lot of backlash. And, and I think that that understanding is very, very important. Even today, we see it, you know, oftentimes with immigrants and immigration in general, you know, they clearly have traumas in the countries that they're coming from, but those traumas don't count. You don't know, nobody, it's, it's kind of like, no, you're lucky to be here. Shut up. You know, when, when we really need, I believe we need much more humanity to understand that everyone has some level of trauma and it's exchanging those traumas where we become community. That's what builds, it builds community to do that.
And it strengthens it. And as a, as a, as a licensed clinical social worker, I really want to invest more in mental health and also also to reduce the stigma. Because there's still that stigma in many cultures, including, you know, ours here, that if you, if you, if you, if you, if you're ailing, if you have something that hurts physically, you seek the, you seek, you know, the support of, the help of the doctor, of a professional, of a medical professional. But if you, if you're hurting, right, then, then there's that stigma that, you know, you cannot go. And then I think, as a commissioner, I want to create that access and I want to destigmatize, you know, mental health. Because all of us have some internal issues that we are dealing with. Each and every one of us, at some level, we have traumas that we are dealing with. And I really want to contribute my part to destigmatize mental health.
I couldn't agree with you more. I think it's a, it's a very, much larger issue than people realize. It affects every family. And what are your thoughts around how you would go about doing that?
Well, I think, as, as, as a, as a CEO, the founder and the CEO of a community organization, community-based organizations, I think we can start there, you know, whether it's in Pecan, Yavah, Ailea, Little Haiti, Liberty City, Overtown, they are rooted, they are, they are institutions that are rooted in their neighborhoods. They know best what we, what we want. I think we should invest in them. And then there are also the churches, you know. We need to invest also in the media. Because in my culture, for example, people listen to the radio a lot. They, they watch TV, they listen to the radio. We need to invest more. And then create spaces where people have access, the key, Damien, la clé, the key. La yave, I don't know if this is the way to say it, is access.
Lo clave, lo clave.
Lo clave. It is access, access. That's what I think.
Without a doubt, you're completely correct. How would you try to promote more of that community building between the organizations and all the different diverse communities that we have here in Miami-Dade County?
Well, I, I think that we need, we need to organize events where we invite them. Like you, and you've invited me in the, you know, Gay Aid Festival. You gave Christina Ponce, you, you, you've identified, you and your group identified a young leader who needed a space, a platform. You invited her. And then we need to start doing these things, you know, you go to, you don't stay, you, 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 like Little Haiti does a piece of Pecan Yavah and then this, we need to create opportunities, cultural events to get the groups together. That's number one. Number, number two, I think the town halls, the, the, you know, where different groups come and express their ideas, their, their, their issues and then find solutions together. I think as a community, we need to do more of that. We are, we are a diverse community and yet we are isolated. We've built these imaginary walls. What I'd like to do as a commissioner is to build, to, to break this, break down these walls, imaginary or not. Break them down. Let's bring people together. And then if we put our minds together, Damien, you and I, I know we can.
We can. I agree with you there. I'm curious, I'm curious as to your thought around social media in, in all of this. Is that, is that another wall or is that a?
Oh, yes, social media. But we also, we need to, we need to bring some older folks like me to the forums.
Right? Because they may not be on social media.
They may not be on social media. But guess what? During the pandemic, you know, we, we had to conduct our organizing, you know, remotely. We had to teach people how to use WhatsApp. We, we, we had to teach people how to use their phones. We started, we started it, you know. I think we are, we, we are doing it and I think we need to do more. So because social media will play a big role. And then we have an advantage of where we can connect people from different groups, ethnic groups, without going anywhere. This is an advantage that social media has and I think that we should exploit it. And I don't think we're doing it enough. And I personally, I need to catch up. I know you, you probably more advanced, but I need to.
No, it's, it can be a kind of different kind of town hall.
Yes, exactly.
Where you are creating that forum.
Exactly, exactly.
Marlen, recently, you know, the, the Roe v. Wade ruling that came down from the Supreme Court. I was wondering how you felt about that, how you feel your community feels about that. And, and do you think that that would factor into these elections?
I think it, it should, but I'm a little bit concerned because so far I don't understand why more people are not out there to go. Damien, I'm, I'm concerned. Because if this, 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 if, if it didn't really mobilize us to go out, we should be, we should be having such long lines right now that people would be calling, you know, additional support, volunteers. But that's sort of what we are seeing and I'm concerned about that. My, my, I was, I was pleasantly surprised because when the Supreme Court decided to, 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 to take that decision to repeal Roe v., people on Haitian radio, there were, a lot of people were talking about that. And you know, because, you know, people used to think that, you know, Roe v. is about abortion. It's not, it's not only about abortion. It's about women's health. It's about women's rights. It's about human rights. And since we've had a radio show for the past 30 years, we were able to use this medium to talk to people, to, to create and engage people. And I was very encouraged by that. But what I'm, what I'm concerned about is the number of people who have voted thus far. It is estimated that only 10% will vote.
Wow. I'm curious, Marlen, on, on the radio show, what, what were the voices out there saying in your community about Roe v.?
Well, believe it or not, a lot of them were saying that they don't have any respect for the Supreme Court anymore because it's politicized. If it's politicized, then we don't need to respect it. Maybe we need to create our own structure. We need to, we need to organize to fight back. And we need to organize to fight back because obviously, politics has, you know, have inserted its ugly heads, you know, in the Supreme Court and which is really sad. And, and it doesn't bode well for our democracy. It doesn't bode well. And we know that our democracy is stronger with an engaged and active constituency. And I think that it's really getting people more and more involved, but we not, we need to do more. We need to do more.
Yeah. I'm hoping that maybe, maybe people chose to vote. First of all, I completely agree with you. I think the turnout and whether people vote is very critical this year in this go-round. Because I do think, think things like Roe v. Wade would filter into the numbers and that'll be interpreted that way.
I hope so. Roe v. Wade, don't say gay. All of that, all these horrible bills. Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll be able to see, you know, a difference there because I, I agree with you. I think it is a very, very, very important time.
Yeah, we are. I mean, we, we are, we are really going down a sloppy slope. And I, I, I think that every citizen, everyone watching, should, should stop thinking about getting engaged. Because, you know, we can't, we cannot sleep at the wheels. We cannot. Because these people, they mean business. They mean business. They know what they are doing. They know what they are doing. So we have to be, we have to be alert. We have to be, we, there is a term used, we have to be woke. We have to be woke, woke, like awake. We have to stay awake to fight for our basic rights, to fight for our rights. And then when, when, when those elected, you know, are, you know, writing, you know, bills that negatively impact our quality of life, our rights, our human rights. We have the God's given rights to fight back. And I think that's what we should do by voting.
Absolutely. Another thing, Marlen, another thing we've talked a lot about actually on this show is political polarization, meaning that each side keeps going further on the spectrum. And, and then, and the people in the middle feel not represented because they, they kind of don't agree with both extremes.
Yes.
And I know in the past, you have been really good at working with people across the aisle. And you have been a good moderate kind of, you know, reasonable person that, you know, you don't make politics personal. And I was wondering if you could comment a little bit about that.
Well, that's why someone like Congressman, former Congressman Lincoln Diaz-Balart endorsed me as a Democrat, as a lifelong Democrat. He actually endorsed me.
That's amazing. Congratulations.
Amazing. And then Mario, Congressman Mario Diaz-Balart, we've worked together for, for years. You know, Al Cardenas, when we were fighting for Harifa, the Haitian Immigration Fairness Act of 1998, Nakara, do you know that Al Cardenas, who was a former chair of the Republican Party, he played a major role, major role, traveling to Washington DC with us. So this, this, this were the old good times, the good old times, where parties could work together and accomplish things, great things.
And now we're talking about putting people on buses and sending them to Delaware.
Can you imagine? Can you imagine?
I really can't. I really can't. But I'm very, very happy that you've always had that spirit of bipartisanship in a way that, you know, you can, can go and collaborate, you know, with the other side.
We have to.
With the other side. And I also agree with you that I think we're living in times that are, you know, just very, very strange politically.
Yes.
I wanted to ask you as a, as a person, this is the first time you run for office, correct?
No, this is the second time.
The second time.
You know, remember, I, I don't know if you recall, that I ran in 2010? That was in 2000. Yeah.
I kind of do now that you said that. I kind of do. But I'm wondering what that is, I'm wondering what, Marlen, what has that experience been like?
At that time?
No, now, today, running for office.
It's completely different because it's a, it's a local seat. I'm better prepared. I learned a lot, you know, when I ran the first time. And even though it is also a crowded field, I had, because of the skillsets that I learned when I ran, I applied them this time and I feel more comfortable with, with what I'm doing, what we are doing. We have a very dynamic and diverse team with different groups represented, you know. Latinos, you know, make up 22% of the, of the electorate. We have Jamaican Americans. We are.
In your district.
It's a very big district and it's so diverse. So I'm, I'm applying all the skillsets to this race and it's going great. And I've been, since I filed in 2019, I've had time to walk the district more. Because when I filed, remember, it was because Commissioner Monizy was thinking about running for mayor. Remember that?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's been a long time and I've been walking and knocking on doors. So it's been, it's been a completely grassroots campaign. I raised less than $300,000 from, from, from the people contributing $10 or $100. Two of my opponents, one has over a million, the, the second has over 750,000. But I, I raised less than 300,000 and yet we had a very, very, we are, we have a solid grassroots campaign. And then we, we people, we've been getting a lot of kudos for how we've been conducting ourselves with respect and dignity. We don't need to be disagreeable. We can be on opposite sides.
I so agree with you. I so agree with you. Also, on that point, how were you able to, to kind of stay away from the temptation of big money?
Well.
Or did you? Or did you? Is there some big money that, that you were, that you took? Because you felt, you know, what, didn't compromise your values or how did that work for you as a candidate?
Well, they didn't give me money because they know that I'm for inclusive development. Like Big Sugar will not give me money because I'm fighting for the basic rights of, of, of those who work so hard for us in our fields. I mean, we need to treat them well. So they, they, so they didn't give me money, but I don't, you know.
You didn't expect it.
That I didn't expect it. So this big interest stay away from me because it's not that I'm against anybody, but I believe that when, when those who build their neighborhoods, they have the God's given right to live in them. And then the developments, I'm gonna, I'm willing and open to work with developers who believe that. You know, you don't need to put all the people out of Pecan Yavah to build at high density.
Which has been happening a lot.
Yes, you can build with them. I mean, when you, when you go to Pecan Yavah, you see this store, you, you, you buy, you know, some nice.
Makes it interesting.
Come on. That's, that's the sexiness is about this diversity. You don't want to lose that. So I'm gonna be, I'd like to work with what we call responsible developers. And then those who are predatory, they won't give me money because they know that the way I stand. And then that's the way I like it. Because we have to create a Miami-Dade County that, that has a space for all of us. And again, our diversity is our strength. So punch number 106, for those of you who live in District two, punch number 106.
I love, I love that you made the point of it's not all about the money. You have a lot less money and hopefully you will win. I believe so. I think you're a wonderful candidate and a friend. Also wondering if you had any advice for any young folks out there who might be considering a run.
Oh, I'd like them to run. One of my, the young leader in my team, Robert Palacio, he's been with me all morning. And I was telling him about you. I told Robert, you need to meet Damien. And this is who is, and he's excited about meeting you. He wants to go into politics, he wants to follow former Mayor Alex Pinellas, who was elected in the City of Ilea Commission when he was, I think, very young. He was the youngest.
He was the youngest, you're right.
Was the youngest. And I think we have a very young one now in Ilea. If I'm, he was, he's younger than, he's a young lawyer. I don't recall his name, he was younger than Mayor Pinellas. So I encourage you to follow these models, you have them. We need young leaders to invest in this political space because we need new voices, we need voices that bring people together, we need voices of the future. That's what we need. And then when we go to Washington, wherever I've been traveling the world, advocating, speaking in front of the UN, wherever I go, in the Philippines, in Geneva, wherever, testify in front of Congress, guess what, when you go to Washington, most of the folks working, you know, are the young leaders. So get involved and then don't just come and then you want to run. Volunteer your time. I've received so many awards as a volunteer for the past 40 years. If I was getting paid for all the volunteer work that I've done, I could leave without, you know, working. I could be a millionaire. And I've been a member of most of the, I've been a founding member or founder of most of the important institutions in Miami Dade County for the past 40 years. Christie's, Haitian Neighborhood Center, CHS, many important organizations. Women, We Will Rebuild, I co-chaired the outreach committee with, again, Congressman Meek, when we were founding the Children's Trust. Dave Lawrence brought me in. First, I was the treasurer for the first campaign and for the campaign to, for the children's trust to become, to remain for life perpetually. I was, I co-chaired the outreach committee, just like I did with the Human Rights Ordinance with the Congresswoman at that time and then so many other leaders. So volunteer work, start volunteering, get involved. Make your contribution. And when the time comes to throw yourself your hat in the race, then you're ready and you're prepared to speak with my gorgeous Damien here.
Well, listen, it's election day. So please, anyone listening to this broadcast or anything, go out, vote. It is so important that you vote today. Please vote. And hopefully, you're voting for Marlene Bastien and you want a punch number?
106.
Number 106. Marlene, you've been a friend for so long and I'm so happy you're running. And we would be so lucky to have you there on the county commission. Just best of luck today, only the best of luck and much love your way. And to everyone out there, thank you very much for joining us on the Forward Miami Show and we look forward to seeing you again next week.